It's here. You good, you good? All right, I'm gonna get this thing started. Call the meeting to order of the common council on February 25th at 7:30. First thing up is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if people could please stand, that'd be great. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Radifrata, Alder Barr, Alder Clouter, Alder Crowsey, Alder Rice, Mayor Richardson, Alder Schroeder, Alder Scott, Alder Strassman. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Next, the public appearances for non-agenda items. I do not have anything. I've got a few people want to speak on agenda items, but seeing nothing else, and I think I know what everyone here wants to speak about, I will keep moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there anything people want to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, next up is administrative report, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to report that we are going to have our Fish Hattery Road 2020 Public Information Meeting. That will be on March 12th from 5:30 to 7:30, and that will occur, or that will take place at the Wyndham Garden-Fitchburg in Hattery Hill. So we encourage the public and elected officials to attend that. Earlier that day, there will be a pre-construction meeting for staff and all the contractors and anybody from this body that would like to attend. That will be at the, in the meeting room here at City Hall, the conference room, and that is at 1:00 PM, I believe. And I'll send you that via email so that you have that information. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, then moving right along to Plan Commission, the first three I know are postponing. Tom, do you want to do that?
Right, the mayor's right, just information, it's gonna be quick. Those first three were postponed because the setback wasn't appropriate. It's going back to, I believe it was Eagan Rule Affairs, and they're gonna relook at it. It's not denial or anything, but they're gonna just relook at it and hopefully come up with a solution. But the first one is certified survey map, it's CS 2330-20, request by Paul Maxwell, agent for Helen Purcell, for approval of a certified survey map to divide property along Adams Road into two lots. And Eagan Rule Affairs, I just told you about that. I'm gonna just move to postpone it.
All right, is there a second? All right, I've got a second one from Sarah. I'm just gonna write to a vote, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that's postponed, next.
Next one is Resolution to Rezone, RZ 2331-30-20, request by Max, Paul Maxwell, agent for Helen Purcell, to rezone a portion of the property along Adams Road. The lot number on both these is for CSM 10315, from exclusive agriculture district to residential district. This was postponed again in plan, I move to postpone.
Second?
Second.
All right, that's been seconded. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is postponed as well. Next one, Tom.
The third, was this postponed to Mayor?
This is, yeah, it's not the same property, but this is also postponed.
Caught my eye. This one too is postponed, it's Resolution R 236-19, a resolution endorsing the city's request to amend the urban service area for the Fahy property in the McGaw neighborhood. For the Plan Commission, this was postponed? I don't remember.
Yeah, I'll have Pat explain it. If you just want to make a motion, postpone.
Well, I'll make a motion, postpone.
Is there a second? All right, Pat, you want to explain this one?
Yeah, this one, they're actually working on sewer capacity issues here for the urban service area extension. Our staff has come up with a solution that would make the sewer capacity work out for the development. It's, it's up, their engineers currently are just working that out, the details of that out. So we expect that to be on the March 10th agenda.
Yeah, if you don't want to approve a neighborhood that can't get the sewer and water services.
That's right, we, we have to make sure that there's capacity in the current system to serve that new neighborhood.
All right, seeing no questions, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, now you get to actually approve something, Tom.
The next one is Resolution 38-20, the CS 2335-20, Resolution approving certified survey request, CS 233520, by Mike Marty, in agent for Goldley-Fitchburg LLC, to divide property along, or Avenue Outlet 8, the North Park into one lot. I move, plan approved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and you want me to spin this one, you want to spin it?
I just remember this was next to the fire station.
Nope, that's the next one, actually. This one is the Addison over here, they had a park in, that was originally planned for the new buildings, last buildings that they're building right now, and they asked if they could actually turn that into another pool, as a amenity for those people living in that apartment instead. We approved that a couple months ago. This is the next step in just making it an actual lot, so they can put that pool in there, because it was an outlot, it was a park. So it's really, I guess, just kind of doing some additional paperwork on something that we've already approved and okayed. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that one's approved.
Next one is Resolution, it's R 39-20, this, CS 2338-20, Resolution approving certified survey requests, CS 2338-20, by Scott Faust, agent for 5415, King James Way LLC, to divide property, associated with the property at 5415, King James Way, Lot 1, CSM 6539, into two lots. I'll move approval.
And then I heard Dorothy seconding, all right, do you want to explain this one?
This is the one that is associated with the old fire station on King James Way, and I believe it's, they're just gonna, it's to add two lots next to it, over that area?
Close, yeah. So they, these people had bought the old fire station, they're selling the building to the county, actually, for use as, for a number of different things, emergency services, management services, the big thing. But there is some land on the north side of the lot that they're keeping for themselves, because they actually own other land that is touching this, that piece of property. So they're kind of expanding what they own, taking a little bit off, land off of what they had bought from us, and then selling the rest of the county for some of their services. So they're just dividing that into the, essentially, two lots, the old fire station that was on King James Way. Dorothy?
And I did note in the drawings that the existing fire station driveway on that north edge was drawn into the new parcel. I checked with the county, and they said that that was the agreement, and they were fine with that. They did not walk through traffic through the emergency management parking lot.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that passes. Next up?
The next one, there's two left, this is Resolution R 40-20, this is the CS 2337-20, Resolution approving certified survey request, CS 2337-20, by Ned Eos, agent for 3101 South Fish Hattery LLC, to divide property along 3101 Fish Hattery Road into two lots, and dedicate land to the public right-of-way, for the public right-of-way purposes. Move approval.
Is there a second? All right, second, and I know Plan Commission approved it. Mike and Ned, do you want to come up and speak to, really, this and seven are both your items? If you want to talk about those, let's know a little bit more. We've seen this in the past, so it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mike Thorson, from Adventure Capital, operating on behalf of 3101 SFH LLC as a manager.
Ned White, as well?
So we, we are here tonight to kind of progress through the, the CSM and land dedication portion of the project, as you are well aware of. In addition to kind of give you the final update for the PDD SIP approvals process, we went before Plan Commission last week. You're well aware, this is a mixed-use multifamily development project comprised of 157 residential units, over-covered parking with an environmental green roof, and approximately 10,000 square feet of commercial bookending the development site on the north and south ends of Fish Hattery Road. We are pleased to announce demolition is underway and progressing smoothly, everything is on track. We have had multiple successful discussions with various lenders on the financing, have four different term sheets in front of us, so that's progressing smoothly as well. And we are probably 95% through unit layout and design, which is amazingly well ahead of progress at this point that we've had on previous projects. So everything is going quite smoothly. We had a materials board with some of the kind of examples of the potential exterior finishes that, that we're contemplating for the project at Plan Commission. And we have pretty much finalized all of the kind of site plan and layout with the SIP that we've submitted for approvals tonight. With that, not to belabor it, if you have questions, we'll open it up, Ned.
I was just gonna add a couple of additional things. For those of you who may not have had a chance to look in detail, it's substantially similar to what you all looked at and approved at the GIP. Sometimes you get a lot of changes between one and the other, very few charter changes that came through sort of here. I do want to note that there was some discussion sort of at the Plan and Commission. We proposed as part of the CSM to change the name of the road as it crosses Fish Hattery from Trace Way to Bowman Drive, in recognition of the family's heritage sort of in the area. And Tom, you encouraged us to think about whether there were materials. I could tell you, we actually had a, a meeting with Andy today, and connected him to our contractor, and he was intending to remove some of the bricks from the original dairy building that he's gonna retain and use in some way. So we have sort of reached out to try and be sure that that happened in recognition of the, the dairy's historical significance. So we were pleased to be able to make that change, and pleased that Plan Commission supported that change, and just wanted to mention that for the, the whole council over here.
Great. Yeah, this first one is really so that they can dedicate right away to the city to extend what was supposed to be Trace Way, but is now Bowman Drive. I did reach out to Andy Bowman and just ask him, hey, you know, I know you guys talked about this a little bit, about making sure that you and your family are cool with, you know, changing the name to Bowman Drive. And, and he did write back with some history, which I thought was interesting. Some of us have heard it, but I think it's worth reading some more. He just says, this is from Andy Bowman, you know, thanks for the call, I need to briefly discuss the proposed Bowman Drive name for the new extension of roadway east of Fish Hattery Road. We first started to talk with the developers, Ned and Mike, subject to naming the new road at the intersection, came up in discussion. Following time to think about it, the name Bowman Road would be, or Bowman Drive would be very appropriate, in our opinion. Most of the road travels through Bowman Properties, a little through the Scholaski property, however, the famous milking parlor sits on the northeast corner of the new intersection. While I was not around to see or enjoy the operation of the milking parlor, I do hear stories from many people across the path of the state. I'm sure there'll be a few in the audience that went there and watched the cows get milked, and enjoyed an ice cream cone following the tour. I did save some newspaper clippings I came across on the passing of my grandmother, Olympia Bowman, in 1998. She preserved articles of my grandfather staying in front of the milking parlor with individuals he hosted on tours, a few that will not leave my memory from a wow factor were dignitaries from USSR and China, though not during the same visit. The milking parlor was state-of-the-art back in the day. These technologies that were being developed and not available to the farming public for a few years after starting the development process. Some of these technologies are still used today in the milking world. Back then, this not only put Fitchburg on the national radar, but the international too. It is not only the business that my grandfather brought to Fitchburg, but civic mind too. Many children spent their Easter Sundays at the farm on the Bowman Easter egg hunt. This drew year after year, hundreds of families from the area, not only watching the children run looking for eggs, but being able to watch their child gleam, glow in excitement from finding the golden egg that won them a pony. Not just ride on the ponies that were on the fair, but an actual pony. Can you imagine a family bringing a pony into Seminole Hills today following the Easter egg hunt? Beyond Easter egg hunts, my grandfather loved baseball, and was involved with promoting and sponsoring many teams through Bowman Dairy. This led to the city of Madison naming the Duane Bowman Senior Field along Fish Hattery Road next to the Wright Mill School. My family would be honored to see this road named Bowman, and continue to be a part of Fitchburg, and continue to be a part of the growing city of Fitchburg. Sincerely, Andy Bowman. So I just wanted to share that as well, let you know that not only is he in support of that, but some interest in family history. Any other questions on this? Yeah, Janelle?
So my one question would tie back to some of the concerns that we originally looked at on this parcel specifically around the asbestos and some of the other elements that were, you know, part of kind of a DNR classification. Is that moving in the direction that we originally intended? Are you satisfied with how that's progressing?
I would say, so, so the extent of, and what the level of contamination of soils is not fully determined. Asbestos abatement has been completed, and it was a relatively straightforward and smooth process. We had a secondary kind of issue arise when we discovered there was, you know, multiple tens of barrels of undetermined type chemicals and drums left behind in, in the factory. We procured a, our, our environmental engineering service to come out and get some bids and have those disposed of properly as well. All little wrinkles that come up with projects like these. We have an approved plan, material management plan with the DNR, with a path to closure and removal of the restriction following the site, and we have environmental engineers on-site through the demolition process, testing the soils, testing other chemicals. There was, there were some things found in the walls just last week that were indeterminate. We had those sent out, tested, came back negative. All things that tend to happen with old buildings like this, and nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you for that update, and also working with staff in the city to, you know, remind us of the Bowman legacy out there.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Yeah, Dorothy?
I had two parking questions, and I know on, semi-related, people had asked about, at Plan Commission, about access directly onto Fish Hattery Road, and looking at the plans, I saw that there is an exit that goes around the retail building, and I think that that's probably close enough for almost all intents. What I didn't see on the drawings was any kind of indication of doorways or whatever for that retail. I presume that that's future planning?
We like to, we have an idea where we will have the doors for the retail sections, but we like to leave a little bit of flexibility so that when we do actually procure a tenant, they can say, well, you know, actually, we'd like to have a nice sliding terrace doors here, and we'd like to have a secondary kind of employee entrance over here. So we try to leave it fairly ambiguous until we know for sure what a tenant may want.
Okay, so the question is more directly related to what parking is set aside for retail. One of the things that I noted in the drawings is it looks as though there's a stairway as part of the bigger north retail, and I wondered if that was intended to go down into the structured parking, and whether there will be public access to the structured parking?
I think what you're referring to is a stairwell down into a storage room in the private parking garage, which is right underneath the actual north retail. So the intent is for it to be storage available and accessible to the tenants, commercial tenants. They would then also have access through that out to where trash collection is, at the southeastern section of the parking garage.
Okay, so the doorway in between would be security locked?
It, it would be fobbed.
So that there, the goods that are stored down there would not have easy access from the parking garage and tenants and?
Oh, it, yeah, so the access into that room itself would be limited to the commercial tenant who would have the storage there. They would be able to get in and out through either of the egresses, the stairwell up or into the garage.
Dorothy, we do occasionally rent interior spaces to some of the commercial tenants, but typically it's a limited number for kind of full-time employees, managers, whatever. But generally, the general public for the commercial space is expected to park outside and not have access. So it's typically employees who would have that, that access.
So how many of the outside spaces are anticipated to be for retail, both for the north and the south units?
It's, there's, there's not a defined number. Typically, what we do is we figure out the demand from private tenant parking, and then we'll leave some of that exterior surface demand for the, for the residential tenants as blocked off as beyond this point, you need a permit to park here. And then the rest of it will be either guests for the residential tenants, or customers for the commercial and retail. I don't have it, the actual numbers right up in front of me, but our assumption is that the 20 to 24 parking spaces in the south will be virtually all commercial and retail, and then that section up at the top north part, the kind of circular drive-in, also be reserved for the commercial tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor of approving Resolution R 40-20, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Number seven, Tom?
The last one is ordinance 2020-0-10, RZ 2336-20, zoning ordinance, men and grant plan development district specific optimization plan, zone for property associated with the same 3101 Fish Hattery Road. I move approval, plan approved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, say, Janelle, anything else you want to add? I think you kind of covered both at once. Any other questions at all on this piece? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Plan Commission that you want to report on, Tom?
At this point.
All right, Public Works, Dan?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R 30-20, approving supplement to agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of sixth addition to nine springs.
Seriously? Second by Dan, and did you approve this in Public Works?
I believe so. Yes, we did.
All right.
I was not, I was not present at the last of the?
Ian, would you like to explain what this is?
Let Pat weigh in.
Pat?
Yeah, this is, this is a change to the, the plat in Uptown for Avante, basically for their, for their next building, so you'll see the, the next resolution also includes some changes out there that moves an easement at the same location, so it's just an update to their plat.
Actually, I believe Plan Commission also approved this, even though it's not listed on there.
They did.
Approved it. It's really just letting, changing a line in the plot, it's not changing the buildings out there or anything like that, but they have to come and get it approved by moving a little line, so. Any questions at all? Seeing none, then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one?
Motion to approve Resolution R-31-20, a resolution releasing a water main easement on Lot 37 and Lots 59 and 60, in the fifth addition to nine springs.
Did you, someone, I need a second, actually, quick.
Second.
All right, second by Ian, and then you approved it in Public Works. Plan Commission also approved it, and same thing, it's just moving the water main and where it is between the two different lots, not changing the amount of buildings over there or anything like that. Any questions on this piece? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. One more.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-007, 007, in ordinance to amend Chapter 68, Traffic, Article 3, Speed Limits.
Second.
Then Public Works approved this?
We approved with the amendment that's listed here in the, in the packet.
Is that adding Seminole Highway?
Yes, it is.
All right, and then did Transportation and Transit approve?
They did approve.
All right, and I know, do you want to speak to what it is? Dan or Pat, maybe? I mean, I know what it is, but, or maybe?
Go ahead, yeah. I know where of it too, but go ahead.
Basically, I'm sorry about that. It, it lowers the speed limits in two locations, the first of which is Seminole Highway, that'd be from the northern border of the city of Fitchburg all the way to Lacy Road. So that would go to 35 miles an hour from the, for that full distance, which is our northern limits by the Arboretum, all the way to Lacy Road. It also lowers the speed limit on Sayen Road, and that would be from Irish Lane to McCoy would be 35 miles an hour, and the speed limit between McCoy and Highway 14 would be 45 miles an hour.
I know I got emails from a lot of people in the public in support of this as well. Janelle?
How do, when we're making a change and we're decreasing that speed, how do we use any kind of public messaging to articulate that change, so that people can, you know, have that kind of flashing at them to get their attention, make those adjustments?
Yeah, we're actually going to use our display board out there once the weather gets a little bit better, just to, it'll, it'll say just that, "Speed limit is changed from 45 to 35, or 50 to 35, whatever the case may be, please watch your speed."
Will we leave that out there for about how long, Pat?
You know, I, I guess we'll leave it out there as long as we can, till we need it, probably in the construction zones, which we're gonna have many of also, but we'll, we'll leave it out there for, you know, that'll be determined by our Public Works and our police department. Our, our police department will be out there too, probably in a lot of situations, just to alert drivers to watch their speed.
Yeah, somebody who's still remembering to get into the right-hand lane to exit off of PD, and still learning those lessons coming back from vacation, and, and knowing that it takes a while to change our behaviors. It would be great if we could even have it out there for a week or so, because I can just see you kind of get into a pattern, yeah.
Yeah, I, definitely at least a week. I would say a longer period than that.
Thank you.
Julia?
Yeah, I have a question regarding Seminole. You mentioned Seminole from Wayland Road to where?
No, not from Wayland, from Lacy Road to our northern city limits, which is approximately up by the Arboretum.
But is, is here in the, I don't see that here in the ordinance, the language.
That was part of the amendment, I believe, by Public Works. They extended it all the way to the northern city limits.
Oh, okay, because here is?
Yeah, so, so the, so the request for this body Yeah, so, so the, so the request for this body would be to amend based on Public Works' recommendation. So if we could get, the mayor will have to ask for a friendly amendment on that.
Yeah, so, um, Dan, if, are you okay with the friendly of?
Let's do the friendly amendment, I would motion the, the friendly amendment to.
Yeah, I think we can just accept it, and who, you have for the second for that motion? Ann, are you okay with that? Okay, so you don't have to really go through the rigmarole of people. Look at that, yeah, so just to make it clear that it's what Public Works has amended, which is essentially Lacy Road all the way north to the city limits, which is up by the Arboretum. Dan?
I would keep in mind, when you cross over the city limits from Madison, if you're heading south from Madison into the city of Pittsburgh, Madison's speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour. Currently, it goes to forty. We're just simply going from twenty-five to thirty-five when you cross the city limits. So you can still speed up, just not as much anymore.
There's an intersection there, but there's not a lot of.
Correct.
On the road.
Right, and so.
Crossing the Seminole, the, the bike path, so.
So when you cross, if you're gonna turn into Belmar, it's sort of that area where the speed limit is. If you're, if you're heading south, you take a right into Belmar, it goes from twenty-five to forty, will now be, instead of forty, will be thirty-five.
I know that we're also, in terms of improving safety in that area, we're taking the lights on McKee Road, where we're putting the bike bridge over McKee Road and replay, and essentially moving those to Seminole where the Capital City Path crosses right there again to improve safety, awareness of bikers, runners, people like that. Dorothy?
I was going to make basically the same point that Dan made. It's been crazy, um, speed changes along there. So getting some consistency will be a good thing, so.
Reminds me of MM is probably the worst one in the city. If you drive up and down MM over here, it's, goes up and down and up and down and up and down. So that's nice to have a little more consistent. Pat, do you know how, when, how soon this change will happen?
It needs to be published. So, and then as soon as it's published, we can order the speed limit signs or have those made. So as soon as we can get the signs out there, I would say, you know, in the next month or so, the signs will be up.
Great, all right. Further questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty oh dash zero seven, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed nay? All right, those are approved. Anything else on Public Works right now, Dan or Ann?
No.
No.
All right, moving along, Park Commission.
We didn't meet this month, nor were.
All right, Library Board?
Our next meeting will be on March eighteenth at five-thirty at the library.
All right, Commission on Engine Well?
Thank you, we have, um, I circled a number of notes and ours. One thing to look for that FAC TV helped with was a patient advocate training video that is kind of fun to watch. This is when, when we have student nurses, basically, that are going to go to doctor's appointments with our residents that are going to help make sure that their questions are answered and their needs are covered. And it, it'll be a nice program for our folks down in the senior center. Calendar date for Pancake Breakfast will be April twenty-sixth, so people can get that on their calendar. Another sign of some of the work that the friends do to support the senior center, they've approved up to a thousand dollars for purchase of additional lobby furniture. So the senior center adds a lot of things into the senior center. And that, that's really encouraging for me. We had, we're, we're working, the, the staff along with a little bit of help from the committee are working on code of conduct policy. We recently had an incident at the center where an instructor was physically and verbally attacked by someone and they needed to really solidify what the policy needs to be in such cases. So they're actively working on that. And then they've got a photo exhibit downstairs called the Milwaukee Beer Line, sponsored by the Center for Railroad Photography and Art, and that's gonna be up through March.
That's only displayed, no sampling?
I don't, don't believe so.
Thank you, RCC?
Yes, just so for RCC, as a reminder, tomorrow at the Committee of the Whole, they'll be giving a presentation, so something to look forward to. And then otherwise, just for reminders, this February twenty-ninth, there's a rain garden workshop in the senior center for, from eight-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM, ten dollars a person, where you can learn how to install a rain garden. And we continue to plan some Earth Day event, so more, some more to look forward to that we'll share as they come about.
All right, thank you, Sita. Oh, I'm sorry, Transportation Transit, sorry.
Sure, so we took up obviously the speed limit ordinance. In addition to that, we had also, in a previous meeting, discussed some of the components related to the comprehensive plan update and some of the components related to transportation. There was a presentation given. We don't always meet, the committee does not always meet every month. There's not always pertinent items to be taken up by this committee, but next meeting would be in March.
All right, thank you, Sita, Julia?
We are meeting on March nineteen.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs?
Nothing to report.
All right, what about EMS?
Nothing to report.
All right, Bicycle Committee?
We are meeting April twenty-first.
All right, Tree Advisory Committee?
Nothing to report.
All right, what about Landmarks Preservation?
We have a meeting on March fourth.
All right, how about the Census Complete Comp, so Committee?
We met recently, we'll be meeting again tomorrow, apparently. Getting a lot of things in order for how the city is going to be involved in the census work. We're going to be having a mayoral proclamation, making April census month, which I'm looking forward to. But we'll be involved as a city in many, in various ways, trying to make sure, especially counting kids is how we get school funding and things like that. So our difficult to count populations, particularly community of colors, is really important for us to do deep dive into, to make sure that we get the money that we need, particularly again for our schools. So, and again, we're meeting tomorrow again. We've got two meetings, I've got HNI added to this list as well.
Oh, yeah.
Is it, yeah, ten, ten-thirty tomorrow? We have Complete Count Committee, so people would be welcome to sit in, in on that.
And I believe in March is when the surveys are going, getting mailed out to every household? I think I saw that somewhere.
Early in March, and they're still looking for people that want a job. And I asked at our committee meeting whether electeds can apply for a job, and I was told as long as you're in a nonpartisan elected position, you would be able to. So I did and immediately got turned down saying, you're an elected. So I still need to sort that out, but apparently every elected, whether they have time or energy or passion to do this work, apparently they're all getting turned down. Which I, I, I'd be happy to do it if, not that I have a whole lot more time to carve into my volunteer life, but that would be important to me.
All right, thank you, and then, yeah, Healthy Neighborhoods, if we can get that added in the future, that'd be great, but.
We are meeting next week to review the application. We received like ten package, they're big packages. So we are meeting with the committee next week to go through the application and then recommend, I think this time the recommendation are gonna come to the council.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Okay, good, looking forward to that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, I'll go to Finance then, Tom?
Finance, the next five items, obviously everybody was at the meeting and these were all passed. But the first one is checks, checks number one-two-zero-three-ninety-seven through one-two-zero-five-one-zero. They're dated two-four this year through two-twelve this year. The total number of checks is two million four hundred sixty thousand thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. No questions, I'll keep going, resolution ordinances. The first one was resolution, it's R twenty-five twenty. An annual Daincon radio maintenance move approval.
There's a second, all right, and did Finance approve?
We did.
All right, any questions, something we do every year? I believe that our emergency services, especially nine-one-one, does this or uses this? Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? All right, that one's approved, next one?
Next one's resolution R two, twenty-seven dash twenty, resolution approve a renewable energy rider contract with Madison Gas Electric for purchase of electricity from the O'Brien Solar Farm. I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
And did Finance approve?
Finance.
Did RCC approve? And Library, I believe? You also approved it, all right. John and Scott, or maybe Phil, do you guys want to come and speak to this or just answer questions? Yeah, Phil, why don't you, yeah, if you could fill, yeah, that'd be great. All right, yeah, there's some people from NG&E here to answer questions, but yeah, Phil, you could tell us a little bit more about what's going on, that's great.
Sure, so I know all this information was in your agenda packet, so I'll try not to belabor anything, but the O'Brien solar array that's been approved for Seminole and Lacy Roads, MG&E is, is working out contracts with a number of customers to purchase solar energy produced by that array. For the city of Pittsburgh, the contract in front of us would, would have us purchasing any electricity produced by a two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt capacity portion of that array. That would be one-eightieth of the total energy produced by this. Anytime the sun is shining, anytime that array is producing, we would be purchasing one-eightieth of that amount that's produced, and that would offset electricity being produced by our meters concurrently. For the thirty-year life of the contract, we'd be purchasing that electricity at a set, a flat six-point-four cents per KWH. So still paying like distribution costs on top of that, but the cost of energy produced would be, would be fixed for, for thirty years, that six-point-four cents. Right now, the, the, the amount of energy expected to be produced by that two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt capacity represents about ten percent of the city of Pittsburgh's municipal energy purchase, uh, usage. So right now, we're somewhere around eleven to thirteen percent renewable. We have a commitment to reach twenty-five percent by twenty-twenty-five. If we sign this contract, that extra ten percent should get us into the low twenties and put us within a striking distance of our twenty-five percent commitment by the end of next year. At this point, it's anticipated that this would be a net positive for us financially. It depends on, rates can go up, rates can go down, but, but right now, it's, it's a positive outlook. And the, technically, the, the contract we have before us right now is for two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts. The project is currently expected to be fully subscribed, but if for some reason, uh, up to two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts more became available, then this, this resolution would approve two-hundred-and-fifty up to a maximum of five-hundred kilowatts of capacity.
Yeah, I think that's a key thing for me, is that based on what we're seeing right now, there is a net financial benefit to doing this, so we would like to done more, but this has been a really popular project, and there's a lot of businesses that are interested in using this energy, which is also a great thing, just means that we can't take advantage as much as we would have liked to. Julia, questions?
I have a two question regarding, so we are getting a fee, a, a fixed fee, isn't it? So there is any flexibility in case that the, the price go down because we are set at this price? So we are gonna have any flexibility in the contract to, you know?
Once we sign the contract, we're locked in at that rate. So the two options available were to have six-point-four cents per KWH and keep that fixed over the thirty-year lifetime or start at a lower rate and escalate that at two percent annually. We felt that that was a little bit riskier to have an escalation built in when we're not sure what rates are gonna look like over the next thirty years. Just, just for context, over the last fifty-year period, electricity rates in the US have averaged a three-point-three percent inflation per year. Over the last thirty-five years, they've averaged almost a two percent inflation per year. And over that thirty-five-year period, there are seven years when electricity rates have gone down nationally. So it's certainly possible that rates could decrease and the finances of this flip, but the, the historical pattern has not, has not been the case that, that rates are consistently going down. You know, it's, it's very possible that they decrease. It's also possible that they go up higher and this looks better.
So, can I, because I have other question. But my other question, in case that the, the price go up, you know what I mean? So if we need to breach the contract, there is any consequences? Do you know what are the consequences? You know what I mean? If we need to, you know, relook at the contract, you know, renew a new contract because of the, in case that, you know?
My understanding of the contract, and certainly, John or Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding of the contract is the only case in, the, the only circumstances under which any part of this contract could be revisited is if some, some, essentially some kind of act of God happened and half of the, half of the projects, for some reason, couldn't be completed because some of the land, I mean, I'm, I'm not even sure what, what might cause that to happen, but if, if there was.
Like a tornado coming and.
A tornado comes through.
All the solar panels.
Something along, right, exactly, something along those lines. But, but there's, there's no clause in the contract that, that, that allows for any renegotiation. We'd be signing on to that six-point-four cents and it would last for the thirty-year lifetime of the project.
Okay, one of the cons here in the, in the text say that could decrease the financial benefit of future city-owned solar project, what do, what do you mean by that?
So what that means is if we were to, if we were to look at, you know, three years ago, we had a municipal solar project, we installed three-hundred-and-sixty-two kilowatts of capacity of solar on the roofs of four of our municipal-owned buildings. If we wanted to look at something like that in the future, part of the, part of the, 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 the cost-benefit analysis is you're looking at the energy that you're offsetting. If we have more energy that's tied up in solar already, then that changes the financial outlook of potential future projects, where we're looking at potentially owning solar ourselves. And so as, as we get, as we increase the amount of our total electricity that's being produced by solar, because solar is produced, you know, during a set period of day when the sun is shining, if we got to a point where, where we were maxing out the amount of electricity that we could possibly use during the day with solar, then adding more solar to that would no longer be beneficial, if, if that makes sense. So right now, this is still producing an amount of solar electricity that we would be using that is, is less than or equal to the amount of electricity we use as a city at any, at any one point. If we wanted to look at, this is unlikely, but if we were gonna look at a megawatt of solar capacity five years down the line that we wanted to own, there would be less value to it just because there's a, a smaller portion of our daytime usage that needs to be offset. Now, on the flip side, if we were going to pursue solar on our own like that, the last time we did that, it was an expenditure of several hundred thousand dollars and we're looking at a payback period of somewhere from nine to twelve years, depending on how much the panels are producing in a given year, what the electricity rate is that's being offset. There's no initial, uh, there's no initial capital cost to the city for this because this is an MG&E project. The cost in terms of the, the hard capital costs are spread out over a number of customers, over the whole twenty-megawatt project and over thirty years. over the whole twenty-megawatt project and over thirty years. So the only cost to us is the electricity we're using, there's no other upfront cost.
Can I go to Janelle quick?
Okay.
My questions are for the MG&E team, so feel free to go forward and then I'll ask to loop them up.
Okay.
All right.
So my other question is, so, in, in, in case that we build another public building and we want to put solar, so, so you are telling me that it's gonna be cheaper for us to buy more solar for the farm than to put solar panel in our roof?
There's, there are costs and benefits to both. The benefit of owning our own solar is at the moment, we don't have to pay distribution and transmission charges. We pay the initial, the initial hard cost of having that solar created, but then we own all of it. Right now, with this one, we're paying the electricity costs, but then we're also paying transmission and distribution on top of that, and so the, the ownership is a benefit, it just requires that initial expenditure. If we were to, you know, right, right now, we have a fire station that was built solar-ready. If we were to build more public buildings, I mean, one, that would increase our total energy usage, and so now it, there's, there's, there's a larger gap between what's being produced and what we're using, and so there's more benefit to, to build more solar again at that point. It, 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 it depends, you know, from, from year to year, from project to project, what looks the best financially. But, you know, given, given financial limitations, when you're talking about a, a project like the, the, the solar array we built three years ago, something like this where there is no initial outlay is very attractive.
I have another one, but I don't know Janelle wants to...
Keep going.
No, my other question is suppose that there is another, we have another solar farm here in Pittsburgh. With this contract that we have here that we are gonna sign, so we are, we are gonna be exclusively buying solar from this farm or we can buy solar from other farms? You know, how flexible is this contract?
This would not preclude us from buying into any other contracts, there's no kind of exclusivity here. I don't know if there are any plans in the short term to build more, but yeah, this, this would not limit us in any way.
This contract is for thirty years, so who know who happen in thirty years? You know what I mean? So this is my question. Okay.
Is it for Phil?
Probably.
Okay, all right.
Okay. One discussion that happened at one meeting was the care of the land between the roadway and the fence, has that been worked out?
Um, care of land between the roadway and fence?
So that's actually a little bit different than, this is just a rider to buy the energy that's for the actual project, but staff has talked with, with, it's actually probably not MG&E as much as it is EDF, if I remember right, but yeah, they said absolutely, they'll maintain that, they don't want a bunch of invasives to be in there because they'll spread through the rest of the project, so the maintenance is part of that, but that, that's kind of the project itself, this is buying the energy for the project, but yeah, they are on top of that. Yeah, Pat?
Yeah, and if I could just sort of add to what the mayor just said here, this, this discussion here should be strictly in regards to this contract here, not into any of the aesthetics or anything that in regards to that project, that went through plan commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I think Janelle has questions for...
That just clarified, so I'm good to go.
All right. Any further questions at all on the rider piece of this? Seeing none, then we can go ahead and vote, all in favor of approving resolution, our twenty-seven twenty, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, thank you. All right, next up.
Next is resolution, it's our twenty-eight dash twenty, annual youth dance instructor payment, I'll move approval. Finance approve?
Second. Second, Janelle, anything you wanna say about this one?
The only thing I wanna say is we have a dance instructor for the city that does a great job in reference to kids from two years, I don't know, five years old to ten or whatever the age is that's doing a great job, I think we have over about two-hundred different classes and, no, participants that we've had during this period, and it's, it's been a real success.
Yeah, do you?
Why do we have this resolution from this type of, for an instructor payment coming through finance and, and council when, you know, it's unusual, so I want to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, that's a great question, and actually, when I first saw it too, I had the same question, and it's because it's over twenty-five thousand dollars anytime, and this, as, as Alder Clouder mentioned, great program, actually over two-hundred-and-ninety, or two-hundred-and-ninety-seven participants in several different types of dance, so it's a very popular instructor, she's done a great job, and the, the contract exceeds twenty-five thousand, that's why it's on this agenda.
All right, anything further? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, one more?
The last one is resolution, it's our twenty-eight dash twenty, adopting the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-thirty capital improvement plan, the CIP schedule, uh, plan, finance, passed it, and I'll move approval.
I think we had a modification that we wanted to make to this.
All right, first, can I get a second though on the resolution?
Second.
All right, thank you, Janelle, and it sounds like you wanna do an amendment?
Pat, can you help me with that one?
Oh, sure. Yeah, it would be basically, the schedule would be modified per recommendation of the finance committee, it would just move the first public hearing two weeks sooner to fit into the council meeting schedule. And we'll get Tracy those exact dates, but basically, it just moves the first public hearing up two weeks.
All right, so, if we can do that as a friendly, if you're okay with making those changes, both of you?
So moved.
All right, excellent, I see yeses from both. Yeah, so it's just the, the, is that in the late June or early July?
It would move the early July public hearing to, to late June.
Okay, great. Further questions on the CIP schedule? I think in general, it's pretty much the same from year to year, it's just kind of what dates they fall on. There are some dates on here, I know some of you for sure will be around when this happens, so if you wanna start blocking off some dates, that would be great. Any other questions at all on the schedule? All right, seeing none, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that schedule is approved. Anything else on finance?
Nothing special, no.
All right, personnel?
Yes, we met on February eighteen, and we discussed three updates to the employee handbook. One, it was updating the break time for nursing mothers and also determined places here in City Hall and in one of the fire station where mother can, you know, breastfeed, you know, you know, take time to do pump, okay? And then, yeah. Then the other change was public work uniform allowance, and the other one is the evidence of insurance policies in the handbook for people that they are driving their own cars, especially, one of the example is the assessor sometime use her personal car to go and, you know, and do those, some assessments, so we are requiring that people have approved of insurance. The other topic that we discussed was social media use policy, a group of people in the, the staff have been working for months to determine what is gonna be the policy of using social media, especially some of the department, they have their own Facebook page, so to be consistent and to have the same message, so there is a new policy on this. And then, lastly, we talked about, you remember in our budget meeting that this council asked staff to, to work on the compensation of the elected official and to determine if we need to make any adjustments, so we are working on that. We work on two options, there gonna be a third option, so we are working with Sarah, she's putting together a great package with numbers, so eventually, this package is gonna come to, to you for review, so there are some stuff that we need to, to talk to Valerie because now that we have a staggering terms, so we can, there, you know, we need the eight elders to vote, but then we, we have a staggering term, it mean that the, the next, the four that they are continuing, the following year shouldn't vote. So, so I think it's gonna be one year, I think in twenty-twenty-one, where we determine that that one is gonna be, the eight council member can vote, well, we are working on that. So that one is the, if we need to make any recommendation and vote, that one is something that we are working with Valerie to determine how we can do it, because otherwise, there are gonna be only four elders and the mayor approving, because the other four, they cannot do that. Because, because we cannot vote in our own compensation, you know what I mean, so...
Yeah, I think if you just delay the implementation...
Yeah, so...
...it would help, but...
Yeah, so we're working on that, but there, yeah, so we, so Sarah, Sarah is working on this, so she, she show us some numbers and some option, and we give us some feedback, and we are gonna continue talking about this in the next meeting. That's it.
All right. And then moving along to public safety?
No, no report.
Nothing additional, all right. Uh, you know, comp plan, there's really nothing additional at this point, the next meeting actually will have the, I guess, kind of the final public hearing and discussion on the comp plan, possibly vote, but we'll see what happens if people wanna delay it until, you know, a couple of weeks or not, but that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Still, people in the public, please, you know, submit comments, questions, anything that you have about this, still accepting feedback, and I know that on the website, there's a bunch of feedback that elders have submitted, I don't think we've gotten too much, I think there's been a little bit of public input since then, but that will be on there as well, so getting close, the end is, I think, in sight, so nothing else there. There's, oh, I skipped right ahead of the mayor's report and elders' report, sorry. Going, backing up for a second to the mayor's report, I don't really have anything additional, I just know that there's a lot happening right now in the city, a lot of stuff getting built, and hopefully, some more projects coming through, but we'll see if any of those actually come to fruition. For all the reports, I'll start in District Three tonight, Sarah.
No report.
Shannon? No, Tom?
I have two things, one, if you're on Lacey Road and you turn left on to Richardson headed south, slow down. It's all over the city, I don't have to have to...
Both ways.
But, you have to slow down. A lot of it, I think, is the neighbors, I get it, but just a lot of complaints from Lacey Road, South on this, Richardson. The other thing is, I was at Black Hawk Church on Mineral Point Road, and it's amazing, just amazing, I can tell you, how often Pittsburgh was brought up with the new church. It really put Pittsburgh on the map. Between Black Hawk Church, the one downtown, or there's one downtown, the one in Pittsburgh and the one on the far west side, the, boy, I was amazed how many times I heard Pittsburgh come out of the pastor's mouth, and we're at the church on Mineral Point Road, it was just, it was really heartwarming. That's all I got.
All right, Janelle?
Yeah, I would echo that, if I'm not mistaken, they just recently did their first Sunday services there, I think that we saw services happening this Sunday, and so, good to see them be in the neighborhood. You know, anybody that's traveling down Seminole right now will tell you, on any given week, it's a wholesale change, you know, so as we take a look at the Hop House, I mean, that's gotten framed in consistent with the things that you've said, you know, the, the changes that we're seeing, you know, obviously, they got their structures in place when the ground was still soft, and it's just amazing in even a week, and what I see that, you know, the change of the city landscape look like.
All right, Dorothy?
I'm trying to remember the name of the church. We had the Faith Leaders Group this morning, Redeemer City Church had, had a good group, we talked about the United Way HNI proposal, and kind of, to all, all the leaders of a lot of the churches in the city, and talked basically about the HNI program, so that was a lot of good information that went out to some pretty important folks.
All right, good. Hen?
We also had somebody from the Badger Prairie Needs Network that spoke, and also Big Brothers Big Sisters.
All right, Julia?
Yeah, I have a question that is, I would like to have an update regarding the, because I receive a lot of email and calls for the MG&E turbine, the wind turbine in the park, so what is the, the latest update with this?
The wind turbine will be taken down by MG&E, per agreement when it was installed, it's their property, they were required to give a certain amount of notice in regards to when it would be removed or altered, they provided that notice period, and they will be taking that down at their leisure.
Very soon, I think.
But it's gonna be before, you know, spring and people start going to the park, or...
Yeah, I, I, I think they're gonna do it as soon as they can, they just didn't give me an exact date.
Okay, okay.
Probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So it's, it's, they are gonna take it down?
They are taking it.
The city doesn't have any power or control to keep it? I want to be sure that we...
No, it's, it's not, it's not the cities to determine.
It's owned by MG&E, and the agreement that we went into ten years ago, you know, MG&E said that they can take it down with a notice, and they give that notice, so they're gonna be taking it down.
And, and to be clear, for those people that are wondering why we would take down something that's producing energy, it hasn't been working for many years and has been sitting there idle, so that's the reason why MG&E wants to take it down, it's, it's not functioning and it is a liability to them.
Dorothy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I know I've asked this before, the ballards that are in front of that going to be impacted?
If the, when the windmill's taken down, or the wind turbine, I should say, is taken down, the ballards won't serve any purpose, so I'll talk to Public Works as to what their plans will be. I don't know if the ballards were put in place by MG&E or the city, but if they were put in place by MG&E, they'd be responsible to take those down.
Again, one...
Stolen columns around it.
Big columns to protect it from cars hitting it.
So we, we should get ahold of the people that, there, there's a scavenger hunt thing, forget the name of the group, but that, one of the ballards is GeoCash, one of the ballards has a GeoCash site related to it, and we should get ahold of the owner of that cash and let them know that they should remove it.
I would assume that they're registered with the Parks Commission or something, or...
I don't know about that.
Okay, well, we'll find out who they are, I have no idea who they are.
Maybe we'll find out.
I know there's, there's one out here too, right outside City Hall, I see people looking on their phones all the time, but I don't know exactly what they're doing, so...
They, they, they get permission to place them in public areas, but beyond that, there's no interaction.
Okay, we'll look into it.
I've, I've let a number of cash owners know related to the Verona Road project.
All right, Dan?
Just to follow up on the wind turbine issue, you know, I, I did contact MG&E and then the representative, and I talked to Pat, and we kinda had, and I said, is there, is there any interest at all from MG&E in, in keeping this in the park, or, there's, we have one resident who really views it as an iconic structure, you know, he's very passionate, he wanted to keep it, and they're, they're just not interested in doing that, it's their property, and we just don't have any control, there's, there's very little we can do. And so I'd mentioned that, a couple other things to note, there are some major construction projects coming forward in the city. Paramount is Fish Hatchery Road, and as I've been out in the district, I've gotten a lot of people who have consternation about the, the construction that's gonna take place on McKee Road on the west side of the city, and then on Fish Hatchery Road headed north over in the center, more towards the east, and so, and I think it was mentioned before, but there will be a Fish Hatchery Road Public Information Meeting on March twelfth, five-thirty to seven-thirty... a Fish Hatchery Road public information meeting on March 12, 5:30 to 7:30. I will be there. I assume other elders, Julia and others, will be there. So, residents who are concerned about, you know, traffic being slowed down, and it will be slowed down, should attend that meeting. And we're gonna get through it. It's gonna be wonderful when it's done, but it's not gonna be a picnic. It's not gonna be a picnic for a lot of us living in the city as it's going on this summer and the following summer. We had hoped to get it done in one year. I think a lot of you know that, but because of the delays and the, we had to rebid it because the bids came in overestimate. We, the bids were too high and so, then what we did is we rebid. We did save $3 million roughly on the project. It's good news, but the bad news is the savings cost us time. It's now a two-year project. We had hoped to take on some of the engineering of this project this past fall. That didn't happen and so, we have two projects going on simultaneously and it will be, there will be pain felt in terms of traffic patterns in the city, but once it's done, it's gonna be very good, very nice for our residents. But residents should just be aware, the city is doing everything they can to accommodate traffic at this time as we move forward this summer, but people should be aware of what's going on.
Julia, you want to add something?
Yeah, one of my biggest concern, that talking to people in my district especially, are concerned about people are gonna take Longford as a collector to access Seminole Highway, like, north on Dolly Drive. There is already, people complaining about it. And the other is gonna be the, when the school is on, you know, you drive out in the school and people are trying to go at, you know, when the school is open, it's gonna be a mess. So, we need to talk to the people that, we need to have a plan to talk to those neighbor there to check with the police department how we're gonna control the transit in that area because people are gonna avoid Fish Hatchery and they are gonna avoid Seminole intersection, you know, there because it's gonna be in the construction. So, they're gonna use Longford.
Yeah, I've already asked staff to consider either putting in some temporary CB bumps, maybe making one or two intersections a temporary four-way stop instead of, right now, there's not really any stops at all. There's a little bit of traffic calming things, but a couple of things like that to help make it more safe because there will be a lot of people that come through there and I know that people aren't gonna be happy about it. So, yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, and just one other little bit of information in regards to this Fish Hatchery Road project is that the beltline, the nice display boards they have with the messages, you'll see them, various like safety messages and so forth. They're going to actually provide the detours. So, they're gonna try to, you know, not great for our businesses, but they're gonna try to keep traffic off Fish Hatchery Road and the main detours will be Highway 14 and Verona Road. So, that's where they're gonna be directing people is down 14 and Verona Road.
Great.
I have one other comment. Dolly Drive, which I sometimes take into town, you know, District 2 residents on the north end of District 2, Seminole Hills, Seminole Highlands, headed, oh, it's not bad in the morning, but it's definitely gonna see an increase in traffic. In Longford, between 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning, the parents are dropping off their children at Leopold Elementary School. It's very busy without the construction. With the construction, it's gonna be, well, it'll be interesting. Now, fortunately, in the summertime, there's no school. There might be some summer school, but it's much less volume. You notice it in the summer, you know, I drive to work 7:45 or 7:40, depending if I'm late or not, and, you know, it's not bad in the summer. But you do, right when school starts, you can, you can tell the difference, so people should be aware.
All right. Oh, one thing I did actually want to mention is just, I want to thank all volunteers who helped out elections. We had a primary recently. We have at least two more elections this year coming up and also Tracy and her staff. I know we implemented Badger Books and it sounds like that went well and people got some more experience on that. So, thank you for all the work that you guys and also for all the volunteers do for that. So, that, I already did the comprehensive plan update by accident. Tomorrow night is community hall and next council meeting is March 10. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second? Same by Janelle? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.